Okay.
Okay. I'll call this meeting to order. It is two o'clock, Friday, October 31st, 2025. And this is a continuance of a public hearing that we started on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. I would entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
Salute.
Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Here.
Commissioner Cowles?
Here.
Commissioner Doos?
Yes. Okay, we're in a public hearing. And I'll go over a few rules first. There's a signature sheet that should be going around. No person shall be permitted to testify or speak before the hearing body at a public hearing unless such person has first signed his name or her name and address to the sign-up sheet provided by the hearing body and indicated what, if any, interest he or she may have and whether he or she lives within 300 feet of the property being considered. No person shall be permitted to speak before the hearing body until such person has been recognized by the presiding officer. All public hearing proceedings shall be recorded electronically and all people shall speak clearly and loudly to assure that the testimony is recorded clearly and correctly. No person shall interrupt the speaker. Any speaker who has evidence of any kind shall submit that evidence to the staff to be entered into the record. Four copies of each document, photograph, item of evidence shall be provided and all shall be marked for identification purposes. People attending the public hearing shall engage in respectful manner. Any action taken that disrupts or endangers others may result in prompt removal. Once the chairman declares the hearing closed, no further evidence or testimony will be presented. Okay. We will start with our staff report. And I would, could you please raise your right hand? You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I don't have in this because it's a hearing for fee schedules or a resolution. I don't have a formal staff report written, but we did a workshop earlier, a couple months ago, where we went through the processes that we had gone through to develop this fee schedules. We have two schedules, so keep that in mind as we, as we talk through this and we get to the point of potential adoption. We want to make sure it's clear that we're adopting two separate exhibits. Anyhow, we went through a process of evaluating our current fee schedules and how we came up with those fees. And then we analyzed those fees against neighboring counties and neighboring jurisdictions on how they charged for those similar, same types of fees. In that workshop, we went through each one of those and then gave a reasoning for why we determined what our proposed fees to be. After going through all those, again, we analyzed what the neighboring counties and other jurisdictions that were similar to us were doing to demonstrate that our fees were competitive or within a reasonable range of, none were, none were more excessive than neighboring counties, but certainly within the appropriate ballpark. And we went through each one of those fees. In this case, the most significant change is going to be within our building code fee schedule where it raises the residential permit fees, the schedule for that, as well as the commercial fees as well. The rest of the fees we all, as we went over, were either nominal or are not significant as far as changes, the minimum 5% raises. And then, and within planning and zoning, we did a similar, we raised some pretty significantly, but not, but not, certainly in excess of neighboring jurisdictions.
Okay.
That's out of the way. We went through those. At that workshop, there was, there were some questions to be had and we were asked a few questions and then we had that hearing a week ago. Here we go. That's about it for our half for our staff report on how we got there. If it hasn't already been explained, if you have any particular questions, I'd be glad to attempt to answer them. Go from there.
Did we have any written testimony or anything for the public?
We didn't receive no, no comments.
And we have one?
We signed up because I made them.
Yeah, I made them.
Okay.
Yeah, we signed up.
Is there any questions the board has at this time?
Not at this time.
I was just thinking maybe we should just kind of go down the line, just so the public can hear what, what's being suggested, if that's okay, from the watch of the meeting.
Okay, that would be fine.
We just have our planning and zoning, just kind of go down the line of, of changes, starting with planning and zoning.
Okay. I'll add in the note, if somebody really wants a more in-depth explanation, they can refer back to the meeting we had before the workshop.
Yeah.
Because definitely there was a lot more discussion to have then. So this is going to be a little bit out of context than we're just going to do now.
Yeah, just less, yep, just less.
So keep that in mind. So I'll go down the line. We started with our categories and we have a minor subdivision. Within a minor subdivision, we have a plating process and a final plat process. We increased the, currently it's a thousand dollar application fee. We increased it to 1,250, $1,250. We increased the per lot fees for the final plating from $25 per lot to $50 per lot, four lots, up to four lots, and then $50 up to $100, basically doubling those fees per lot. Under a major subdivision, we did a similar thing where we went from $1,200 to $1,500 for the base application fee. And then we raised the per lot fee from $100 a lot to $125 per lot. Under a planned unit development, we did a similar thing where we went from $1,200 application fee to $1,500 and then $100 per lot to $125 per lot. Planned unit development is nearly identical to the subdivision. Other subdivision fees include boundary line adjustments, plat text amendments, no changes proposed there, comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance amendment. We had no previous fee scheduled for that, so we, we added that in at 1,250. That process is very similar to a, any ordinance process or subdivision type process. Development agreement, we did not propose any changes. Under conditional use permits, we increased the residential permits from 300 to 375, commercial conditional use permits from 600 to 750, and industrial from 1,000 to 1,250. The mountain overlay district permit is a new one. We, since we adopted these fees, we had no previous fees and we estimated that application process to be $600. Under site disturbance permits, we went from $100 plus $65 per visit to $150 plus $65 per visit. We didn't have a previous method for charging if we needed to send a permit out for technical review or engineering review, so we added that in. It's a base $200 plus the actual cost of design professional review. And the way that's designed with our, with our on-stick, not on-staff, but our contracted engineering firm is the first hundred, $200 will typically cover most applications. If for some reason it's a more complicated one and it goes over, the applicant will be made aware that it will cost them more to keep the process. Special use permit, we didn't propose any changes. It's still at 600. Administrative exemption to yard setbacks, we increased that from $50 application fee to 65 and we kept the per-site visit fee the same. Under zone changes, residential zone change, we increased from 600 to 750. The zone change for, for commercial to industrial, we went from 1,000 to 1,250. And we now have, we will soon have an agricultural protection area district and there'll be an application process for that and we're anticipating that to be 650. We won't know until we do one, but we'll start somewhere and that's why we want that. Under vacation or abandonment of plat or county right-of-way and road validations, we increased from, had it in there previously as only $250. Certainly we've learned through, when we went through this, we've learned through the process that those application processes take quite a bit of effort, so we increased that to 1,500. A variance with a public hearing, we went from 400 to 500. We didn't put on any of those, but a little extra cost. Appeals starts on this page and goes to the next page. We went from 300 to 375. This is a moderate increase to the process that goes through. We added in an appeal of, added in the appeal of planning and zoning administrative decisions from 150 to 188. That was a straight change. Floodplain permits, we went from, we proposed no change to the base permits for those. We did add in the option for, if there was a requirement for design professional review, we'd have a method for recouping those costs or charging those costs directly to the applicant. Under general fees, we added in some fees we didn't have before, again, with a design professional review, if and when we need those. There's an actual cost, plus 15% for processing. Planning administrator review, sometimes I ask to review things that aren't part of an application, and so we have a method of charging $35 an hour for that. County survey review, that comes in with most plats or if we needed him to review something for us or as a part of an application, that's just the actual cost with deposit. For a minor subdivision, we do $100 and a major subdivision would be $200, so there's no, no proposed change. The rest of them were fees for maps. We don't have any changes there. Change of address, we've eliminate, fee eliminated. We used to have it on schedule. We don't, we can do that through our GIS, we don't have to charge for that. Technology fee, we've proposed, we add a $25 per application and that helps us pay for software and other permit tracking methods and has to hope to build that up to be able to do that. Under the legal cost, there's the advertising, the postage for mailing and the hearing transcripts. Those are all actual costs. The hearing transcripts come with a $200 deposit and there's no change in any of those. We have added in a surety bond as required. Some applications require a surety bond and we're proposing to add a 10% of the estimated total cost or a thousand dollar minimum. Under code enforcement, we laid out some fees for processing code enforcement. Investigation of code violations, once it's determined that a violation is identified, the first inspection's $168, re-inspections are $134. Work performed without a valid permit is up to double the original applicable permit fee. That's already built into our building code and we added it into our planning and zoning. Administrative fee for filing a certificate of non-compliance or a notice title, we have a $250 fee for that. An administrative fee for release of that certificate of non-compliance is a $250 fee. And for the processing of recording. That's the end of planning and zoning fees.
That would be exhibit A on that resolution.
We did a similar thing with building code, although building code's a little bit different method of doing the permits. And so as we explained before, the way building permits are derived, fees are derived, we have a base fee, we have a valuation calculation. That calculation refers to, creates a number for the cost of build and then there's a chart of scheduled fees for the per thousand evaluation and that's derived from the ICC code. And that's what we've been using along and none of the jurisdictions have changed that, so it's still applicable. What we did is recalculate how we get there. And so there's no change to the plan review fee scale. We can charge, ICC code puts this parameter out there, that we can charge between 35 and 65% of the permit fee. So when we do a permit, we calculate a valuation, the plan review fee for that valuation is anywhere from 35 to 65% of that. And that's a sort of judgment call for the team or the building official because it depends on the complexity of the case. Some permits are far easier to review and therefore we don't need to charge much for the plan review. Other ones are very complicated, so we should charge them off of those. We typically ride in the middle and then hope we win more than we lose, or we keep it in the middle as much as possible. And that's worked out really well over the years. So like I said before, the biggest change here is our current factor for residential dwelling space is, has been $94.06 a square foot since I started here in 2008. We're proposing to raise it to $140 per square foot. The ICC call out and for our area and the surrounding jurisdictions is $183. It was $187, I'm sorry. It was $187, $187 for that valuation. So we felt like 140 was a, was a good median place to land. We did the same fees for any additions to, to homes, basements, and any basically work on a residential home. Manufactured home settings, we went from, we just barely up those from single wide from $80 to $84. For double wides, 160 to 168 and then triple wides are $252. On a real property set, we evaluate the foundation portion and so we, we proposed to increase that from 1744 square foot to 1831 a square foot. Again, a nominal raise. The rest of these are pretty much that nominal raise in fees. For a garage, single garage, detached garage, we went from 3555 to 3733. Pole buildings, which is real common, we went from 2133 a square foot to 2240 a square foot. Again, not much of a raise. Open carports and lean-tos, 1444 to 1516. Interior finish with no framing, 978 to 1022. Interior finish with framing, 2044 to 2146, a couple dollars per foot there. For decks, we went up 50 cents from $10 to $1050. Decks with covered screen enclosures, we went 1422 to 15. Re-roofs, we went from 300 square foot up to $315 a square, I'm sure, a square, which is 100 square feet. Re-roof with new rafters and trusses, we evaluate that square footage based on the rebuild of the structure and that's 978 square foot up to 1027. Siding, similar to roofing, we went from 300 a square to 315 a square. For foundations only, we went from 1567 to 1645. Routine walls, we went from $14 flat to 1470 a linear foot. Fences over seven feet high, was a flat fee of 65, we went to a flat fee of 6825. Metal open-sided carport kits that meet snow loads, they can demonstrate they meet snow loads, just a $50 flat fee. We went up to 5250 a flat fee with a caveat there that the max 10-foot wall is up to 400 square feet. We're doing a fair amount of ones that are larger than that and then we have to go to the regular type building permit fee to charge for that. Demolition permit, we proposed no change from $60. Container, metal roll-off containers, we went from $50 a flat fee to $100 per container. Under exempt buildings, that's a, we went from $30, $35 flat fee for that permit to $70 flat fee. Building move, I think that was just added in, $65 a flat fee. Breeze way kind of falls under the same things as carport or lean-to and so it's the same fee, 1422 to $15. And then, under the commercial fees, it's always been the most common is to, is approved by the declared value. And so under commercial things, sometimes they can be a lot more, but we don't want to set a particular fee because it can not be there enough for the complicated nature of the commercial room. So those have no changes there. Replacing windows, we went from a $50 flat fee to $52, I'm sorry, $52.50. Same thing with commercial on there, it goes up to an approved declared value. Sign permits, again, kind of a $200 flat fee because they're pretty straightforward. Demolition for commercials, approved declared value. Swimming pools, we don't get very many of those, approved declared value. Solar panels and residential, I think I've seen more solar panel permits than a swimming pool permit. So that's a $100 flat fee for those and those are pretty straightforward, like similar to roofing. Residential wind and telecommunications towers, the permit fees in there was kind of left wide open for commercial, so we put in there an industry standard of $2 a linear foot in height. Commercial tele, commercial telecommunications towers, it's an improved, is an approved declared value again. Other fees, we added, we added in a variety of fees here. A technology fee added to permits over $150, $25. A temporary certificate of occupancy, we wanted to have the ability to charge a fee for that because there's a process to have to go through to do that. Temporary certificate of occupancy extension, we proposed that at $100. Keep getting permits getting extended out and takes more of our time to deal with. Penalty fee for moving into a residence prior to obtaining a temporary or regular certificate of occupancy, so this goes beyond just the code violation, so it's a $100 fee for that. Changes in occupancy is $100 flat fee. Board of appeals application fee, $188 is proposed there. Changes to approved plans, $75 per hour, a minimum of 75. So once we approve plans, going back and having to re-review them, which has been a thing for us to recognize that it's a time consumer. Plan re-review fee, the same thing, $75 per hour with a minimum of $75. Special inspections and re-inspections for all divisions, $75 an hour. And that gives us that opportunity to, many times in the past, people want something else to come look at something, but without a permit in hand to be getting paid for, we couldn't really go out to somebody's house and spend time and effort on their house without some method of getting paid for it. And so we now have the ability to go out and at least do a pre-assessment or something to help people get started on what to do. And so we think that'll be helpful and we'll have the mechanism for capturing that, that fee. Permit extensions is another big deal, so never had a fee before and that's $100 per extension. Typically, there's six months between extensions and so people have plenty of time generally. If there's extenuating circumstances, we can certainly take a look at that, but that kind of falls back into the next one, which is the permit renewal and the permits that are almost to expire, 50% of the original fee or $100 minimum. If it's been expired more than six months, then we have a full permit fee proposed and then work performed without the valid permit is up to double the permit fee and that's not changing and that's what's in ICC code. Here we added similar fees to, for code violations as we did with the planning and zoning, so the investigation of a code violation or blight, if a charge is identified, then we have an ability to charge the $168 for first inspection and $134 for the re-inspections. Administrative fee for filing a certificate of non-compliance is $250, same as P and Z. Administrative fee for release of certificate of non-compliance, notice title, same to $250 to release it. Building department use of outside consultants for plan review inspection or both, we want you to have the applicant be responsible for those, so it's the actual cost of the design professional review plus 15%.
Okay. Thank you for going through.
Now, now here, just real quick before we turn it over to, this is exhibit A.
This is going to be exhibit A.
Planning and zoning schedule will be exhibit A.
Are we doing one resolution or two?
I believe it was one resolution for fee schedule.
Okay.
And the reason we want the two separate exhibits is because in our building code it references its own building code fee schedule, so, and there's, it's a different way of doing it, so.
So you want the planning and zoning, then schedule A, and then the building code and schedule B?
Exhibit, yes.
And then we'll make the valuation exhibit C then?
Oh.
You gotta, you can't talk and that's.
So with the building code, fee schedule comes the, the separate exhibit of the valuation chart. And that's pulled out of our code as well because that chart can change. We don't want it to affect a fee schedule, so then we would identify that as, okay.
Questions? Should we go on to public comment, not public comment, but input and then come back and then do all the questions wherever you like, okay? So we'll go to the, the sign-in sheet. We have Matt Eener, 876 Burke Road. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And I see you're just giving testimony.
Yes. Yeah, I want to object to this public hearing.
Okay.
On the grounds that there's a conflict of interest here. Our planning and zoning administrator does a outside consulting work for, I believe, subject, minor subdivisions, major subdivisions. I don't know about planned unit development, which if the rates raise up too high, it's a conflict, personally could lose business from his private business and he shouldn't, in my opinion, anything that he does outside of there, he should not have had his hands into. It's a conflict. And the building side, I have no problem with. We make money on that. The P and Z side, we don't. Also, I would request any additional evidence. I give time for rebuttal. Thank you.
All right. Okay, move on to your next question.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. So we're allowed to charge fees for actual costs. So what's your thinking on the technology fee? Is that an actual cost or are we just trying to recoup an actual cost? What is?
We currently pay for, particularly Adobe software and we also pay for Esri GIS software for licensing to the tune of $1,500 a year for those licensing. So it's a couple hundred dollars for one, 1,200 for the other. So this is a method of many other jurisdictions used to basically build an expense line item for continuing to buy software that's used within the process or to build the kitty enough to purchase additional or other software. Currently, we use, we want to use it as a way to recoup some of the expense that's spent on the current software we use, depending on how much is derived on an annual basis. Then you can take a look at using that as a, as a way to expense other software, such as, there's lots of softwares out there for permit tracking and permit processing. Right now, we do a lot of our permit processing manually through spreadsheets and through physical input of data. Certainly, there's lots of softwares out there that, once data is put in, it would be carried through the permitting process, creates an ability to track things better, provide things available online, processes like that. So there's softwares out there, but of course those softwares cost money to get in place and be trained for and then usually any of the subscriptions to keep them up. So those have always been fairly cost prohibitive. So we're proposing that with 100-plus building permits, that we think we might be able to charge that $25, too. That could be a substantial amount of money that would benefit, you know, the purchase of more software to speed up our process and make ourselves more efficient. And meanwhile, it's not a substantial fee, again, on top of the people that are utilizing that because that helps us to get those permits processed first out faster.
Okay. I have one further question, just on the, the increase on the vacation or abandonment of plat or county right-of-way road validations on exhibit, I guess that's A. I mean, some of our other fees have gone up 20%, 25%, 5%. That one is multiple times. Is that, and you mentioned based on our experience, so is our experience showing that that's actual cost, that 1,500?
It is because it's based on the processes we go through for vacation. I could summarize it or get into detail if you'd like. We get an application that's requesting a vacation or a right-of-way. The processing of that application, the research with the applicable agencies to determine is that a problem or not, or what are the requirements and conditions? And then the hearing process and the noticing process and the staff report writing process is all nearly identical to what it is for subdivision. It's a similar process that we go through. So that's where that number came from, was that's where we were proposing to raise our subdivisions to. And as our, looking back over the few projects we've worked on, they were nearly identical to many of the subdivisions we've worked on. Some are easier than others, some have been more difficult than others, but that's where we landed is it was a very similar process to a subdivision and so we thought the fees that were similar, the subdivision was more appropriate. that were similar, subdivision was more appropriate to charge than simply, certainly, you know, the previous ones, we were only able to charge $250 plus the legal advertising and whatnot, the hard costs, and we certainly spent many, many more hours on those than we ever got this feedback. So that was the, we recognized that was a substantial jump, but we also recognize that we are likely to have a fair amount of additional requests for vacation, and each one takes a certain amount of research, and then, once we get in the process, it takes that process to, our rationale for that significant increase. Appreciate it.
No further questions. Any questions? So, exhibit C is what you're stating, the A, the building?
It's known as table 1092 from the building permit evaluation chart, and that's how it's listed in our building code as well. And that's not changing, there's no proposed changing to that chart.
And when we went through this before, these, the amounts are, you know, we saw three different counties, other counties that we've went through on.
Four, some of them, yeah. And we tried to show a high range and the low range, you know, and also the ones that were most, more applicable to some of our shows, like Vala County, Lorna County.
All right, do we have a rebuttal?
I still object.
Still object to the hearing? All right, I would, I don't think I have any other questions right now on this subject. I don't have any other questions. I think that, you know, looking at Idaho Code 31870, that, you know, we're, we can charge for fees, and I really think it's a good idea that we start charging for fees, because instead of allowing our taxpayers to pay for that fee, like with building permits, and then also the shifting the development cost to the developer, so, thank you for going through that, but I would entertain a motion to leave the public hearing?
I make a motion that we move out of the public hearing.
Second that. Now, we're in regular session, and, oh, yeah, we better, motion, motion, and you second it, all in favor? Or actually, let's do a roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Zimmerman?
Here.
Commissioner Cowles?
Here.
Commissioner Dose?
Yes. And we had a motion and a second on that one?
Yes.
Okay. Now, one deliberation. I don't see any issues with the amounts that was brought to us on any of these. Did you guys see anything that you, any questions?
No.
I don't have any further questions. I think, I would like to ask the POCC, I think what we're looking at is, these are actual costs the county's incurring, all we're doing is shifting them from the taxpayers in general to the people who are doing the benefit on the service.
Yes.
If the fees are based on the cost, according to Idaho Code 31807, we can charge those fees, so it would shift it, you know, more off the taxpayers to who's actually, to the builders, where the costs are coming from. Do you have any other questions? No further questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion, if we're done, entertain a motion. Are we ready to make a decision now, or do we want to table it, make a decision, make the decision later, or we want to go forward?
I, I've gone through it.
Mm-hmm. You guys ready to make a decision now? I would entertain a motion.
I've tried to, the right words, so I guess I would move to approve the change in fees outlined in our A and B here for the proposed planning and zoning fee schedule changes, as noted here, and the proposed building permit fees schedule, as noted here.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
For clarification, can you add, down C?
For the move that we approve exhibit C, which shows no changes, but is attached, was attached here on the back of this, I would move to approve exhibit C.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's nothing, if there's nothing further, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
And I'll get legal.